Everyone, we're going to begin with our Legislative Caucus and then we will officially call our Legislative Session to Order. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Truesdale will lead our roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Vice President Green, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Doug Hill, who serves as the President of the Capital Area Green Belt Association in recognition of the Tour de Belt's 25th Anniversary. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of the minutes for the Legislative Session that occurred on April 22nd, 2025. Then, we will move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of May 6th, 2025. Chair Daniels is not present this evening to share her report on... Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were on virtually. I apologize. I couldn't see the Zoom. Chair Daniels is present to report on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee on the two public hearings that were held on May 6th, 2025. The next report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Rawls on behalf of the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee on the Work Session of May 6th, 2025. And the final report will be delivered by Chair Jones on behalf of the Public Safety Committee on the Work Session of May 6th, 2025. We will then move to ordinances for first reading. Bill 5 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Bill 6 of 2025 will move to the Public Safety Committee. And Bill 7 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Ordinances for amendment: Bill 3 of 2025 and Bill 4 of 2025. And then ordinances for final passage are also Bill 3 of 2025, which we will vote upon, and Bill 4 of 2025, which we will vote upon. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 22 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 23 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 25 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 26 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 27 of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution 28 of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 29 of 2025, we will suspend the rules for discussion and then vote upon. Resolution 30 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 31 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution 32 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution 33 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution 34 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 35 of 2025 will also move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 36 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 37 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 38 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 39 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 40 of 2025 will also move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 41 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, Councilmembers?
I did want to ask about resolution, I think it's 65. It was the one where they were, I think it was for like abandoned buildings and foreclosed homes, like where we were on that. I think that was Resolution 65.
So, shockingly, I never know what a resolution number is, so I don't know which one you're talking about.
It was the company we hired, because we didn't have proche anymore. And I had it written down.
For the foreclosure registry?
Yes, yes, for the registry.
So, the best we know, it's up and running. So, what they do is they mine the data out of the courthouses and send out the notices and keep a registry. Now, I haven't gone to look to see if the registry is there, but when we talked within the weeks after that, it was supposedly coming up on board. We can confirm that. And their main contact has been codes in the past.
Okay, that's fine. Because I wanted to ask them too about, we had spoke about using QR codes on some of the buildings for residents to be able to know what's happening with them when they scanned it. Just another way to interact with the community.
I recall that, yeah. And I don't know if there's been a follow-up to that.
That's what I wanted to see too. So, would I just contact codes and just ask them directly for maybe a contact number? Would that be my best solution?
Yeah, I think probably Mr. Solkowski could get that for you for codes and see whether the QR code came up in discussion operationally, because that wouldn't just be one person, right? That wouldn't just be codes. So, I don't know if it's come up operationally in discussion or not.
I think so. Maybe cut the, I'm not sure. That could have been one too about cutting the grass. Maybe they were supposed to also keep it.
Well, they don't keep it. The reason you have a registry is so codes or fire, whoever can contact the person who's a registered agent for the bank or the finance company, and then they can confirm that they have someone assigned to take care of that property since they took the foreclosure.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that update. And then I'll contact Mr. Solkowski, your code, and go from there. Thank you.
Any other old business for discussion, Councilmembers? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and then we will adjourn. So, the time is 6:12 PM. I would like to call our Legislative Session to Order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. I'd like to just take a moment to keep all the residents of Harrisburg and our thoughts and prayers. Anyone who just needs some extra prayers or just a moment of silence, if we could just take a moment for everyone. And then also, on a more positive note, if we could just give a shout out to all the seniors at Harrisburg High School. They really looked wonderful at prom this weekend. Thank you to them. Thank you to the parents and the community. And I look forward to seeing them all at graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Hill. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great vision of our nation, our drive, and our physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Doug Hill, who serves as the President of the Capital Area Green Belt Association in recognition of the Tour de Belt's 25th Anniversary.
Thank you so much. And it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. And I've been in front of you quite a few times over the last year and a half. And it's just so good to be here for something this celebratory. This is the 25th Anniversary Edition of the Tour de Belt. It is the primary fundraiser for the Capital Area Green Belt Association to do the work that we do to help maintain and develop the green belt throughout the course of the year. The Tour de Belt is a family-friendly ride. It is not a race by any means. It's just an opportunity for the community to get out and enjoy the treasure that we have here in the city. And so, we do hope that people will join us this coming Sunday. So far, the weather looks good, and we're pleased with that as well. But I do want to take a moment tonight to say thank you to the city for the cooperation and support that you give us so generously. We work with the administration on quite a few things. It's probably every agency at one point or another. It's the engineer, the planning office, the grants administration, Parks and Rec, Public Works, and more. And we also appreciate the relationship that we have with you here on council. You've been very courteous to us on the many things that we're working through over the last couple of years. We appreciate the general appropriation you do each year. And we appreciate the work that you've done to help us submit grant applications for some needed improvements along the trail. So, with that, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity. And we hope that everyone from Harrisburg and indeed from the surrounding area comes in this weekend and just enjoys this wonderful asset we have that provides such wonderful recreational opportunities, provides environmental stewardship, and in fact, is part of our active transportation network. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that will occur on Sunday, June 1st, 2025. What time and where can people meet up or register if it's not too late?
Yes, we have, the registration is available on our website, CAGA.org, C-A-G-A.org. And this Sunday, we meet up at the, excuse me, at the Hack Campus. And it is staggered starts. So, we're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of at least 1,000 riders. And the first wave goes off at about 9 o'clock. And we stagger starts after that until everyone's gone.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation in honor of the 25th Anniversary, so please indulge me just for a few minutes. The City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Office of City Council and Office of City Clerk. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrisburg proudly recognizes the Capital Area Green Belt Association, or CAGA, for its 25 years of service and stewardship in organizing the Tour de Belt, an annual bicycling event that highlights and supports the Capital Area Green Belt Trail System. And whereas the Tour de Belt was first hosted in 2001 to raise awareness of the Capital Area Green Belt, a 20-mile scenic loop that connects parks, natural areas, and neighborhoods throughout the Harrisburg region. And whereas over the past quarter century, the Tour de Belt has grown into a beloved community tradition, drawing thousands of participants, volunteers, and supporters each year while promoting outdoor recreation, healthy lifestyles, and environmental stewardship. And whereas the Capital Area Green Belt Association is a volunteer-led nonprofit organization that works year-round to preserve, maintain, and improve the trail, partnering with local municipalities and community groups to ensure the green belt remains a vibrant and accessible public space. And whereas proceeds from the Tour de Belt directly support maintenance efforts and improvements to the green belt, benefiting residents and visitors of all ages and abilities, and enhancing the quality of life in the Harrisburg area. And whereas the 25th Anniversary of the Tour de Belt marks a significant milestone in CAGA's ongoing mission to foster a deeper connection between people and nature, promote sustainable transportation, and create lasting memories for families, friends, and cyclists from across the region. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends the Capital Area Green Belt Association for its dedication to enhancing the quality of life in Harrisburg through environmental preservation, recreation, and community engagement. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend its best wishes for a successful and celebratory 25th Anniversary of the Tour de Belt. Signed and attested in the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. We'd like to take a picture, of course. So, if you could join us just for a second. Thank you.
You should have brought your bike, man.
Now, we will move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. And we also have a visual aid in the clock on the TV screens. So, I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay, if you could please come to the microphone here.
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Hicks, Senior. I reside at 1300 Bigelow Court. And I must say, this is a very nice-looking council. Congratulations to the incumbent two-one. Y'all did a good job. And also, congratulations to Councilman Jones. You ran a very dignified campaign, and I appreciate you being a man of character. So, I'm here today, you guys. I have a new position in the community. I'm self-employed as a community organizer. I've served this country. I've done programs in this country for over, this community for over 30 years. And it's about time we start organizing in the city of Harrisburg on the other side of Division. They have an organizer on the north side of Division. He's been organizing politics and doing things for decades. So, it's about time that we unify. I'm starting off uptown, unifying the uptown community. As you see, we got these brothers here from the Nation of Islam here today. We have the Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United. That is a nonprofit uptown. I'm here today just to say that, get used to seeing our faces down here. We want to work with council, particularly Parks and Rec and Public Safety, because these gentlemen have a stake in the community when it comes to safety that we want to be a part of. We feel that men in the community, particularly black men, we need to step up and hold our community accountable. We can talk about the stop, harass, and humiliation that's going on with the police department. You know, that's kind of fizzled down. And there was supposed to be about 25 young men and people who were victims of that. They didn't show up today, which I'm not surprised. But that still doesn't discount that things have to change in our community. And so, we're coming to talk about programs, because again, the nation has a lot to offer, our community. Camp Curtain, the uptown community, has a lot to offer. And my goal is to organize the whole city, not just uptown. But I'm an uptown boy, so I got to start at home first. You know what I mean? And I've been out to south, and nobody from the south is showing up. So, if y'all watching from the south, show up and not just talk. And so, I know I don't have much time, but the bottom line is, we want to meet with Councilwoman Rawls and Councilmember Jones real soon. The mayor is going to meet with us soon. And our prayer is that you guys come together. You know, it's going to take prayer, we know. But we do want the best, you know? We don't want division, because to organize this community and to get it right, we can't have division. It has to stop. So, with all that being said, get used to seeing our face down here. We hope to bring a packed house of community members to have a stake in this community. And we ain't coming as adversaries to you guys. Again, we want to work together. We want programming to kick off like real soon, because the summer's jumping off, you know? So, we got some ideas. Councilmember Rawls, we'll be talking to you real soon, okay? So, thank you for your time. Keep up the good work, y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Hicks, Senior. I reside at 1300 Bigelow Court. And I must say, this is a very nice-looking council. Congratulations to the incumbent two-one. Y'all did a good job. And also, congratulations to Councilman Jones. You ran a very dignified campaign, and I appreciate you being a man of character. So, I'm here today, you guys. I have a new position in the community. I'm self-employed as a community organizer. I've served this country. I've done programs in this country for over, this community for over 30 years. And it's about time we start organizing in the city of Harrisburg on the other side of Division. They have an organizer on the north side of Division. He's been organizing politics and doing things for decades. So, it's about time that we unify. I'm starting off uptown, unifying the uptown community. As you see, we got these brothers here from the Nation of Islam here today. We have the Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United. That is a nonprofit uptown. I'm here today just to say that, get used to seeing our faces down here. We want to work with council, particularly Parks and Rec and Public Safety, because these gentlemen have a stake in the community when it comes to safety that we want to be a part of. We feel that men in the community, particularly black men, we need to step up and hold our community accountable. We can talk about the stop, harass, and humiliation that's going on with the police department. You know, that's kind of fizzled down. And there was supposed to be about 25 young men and people who were victims of that. They didn't show up today, which I'm not surprised. But that still doesn't discount that things have to change in our community. And so, we're coming to talk about programs, because again, the nation has a lot to offer, our community. Camp Curtain, the uptown community, has a lot to offer. And my goal is to organize the whole city, not just uptown. But I'm an uptown boy, so I got to start at home first. You know what I mean? And I've been out to south, and nobody from the south is showing up. So, if y'all watching from the south, show up and not just talk. And so, I know I don't have much time, but the bottom line is, we want to meet with Councilwoman Rawls and Councilmember Jones real soon. The mayor is going to meet with us soon. And our prayer is that you guys come together. You know, it's going to take prayer, we know. But we do want the best, you know? We don't want division, because to organize this community and to get it right, we can't have division. It has to stop. So, with all that being said, get used to seeing our face down here. We hope to bring a packed house of community members to have a stake in this community. And we ain't coming as adversaries to you guys. Again, we want to work together. We want programming to kick off like real soon, because the summer's jumping off, you know? So, we got some ideas. Councilmember Rawls, we'll be talking to you real soon, okay? So, thank you for your time. Keep up the good work, y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live on State Street in Harrisburg. I was in a fairly good mood until I came down here and saw all those buses. And I had to go across around the block several times. I tried to stop the policeman to see if I parked in that handicap space, whether I was going to get a ticket or not. They don't think so, but if I get one, I'm not going to really be happy then. But this was an exceptionally bad time to park. But parking to come to the city council meetings is normally not that easy. And I was just wondering if we could park back in the loading zone or sub in the garage or something, so we don't have such a difficult time getting to city council meetings. Okay. I'd like to follow up on some of the things that I discussed in the past. What is the status of getting a rail on the steps going up into a reservoir park, the last set of steps in the Walnut Street? I'd like to know the status of that rail.
No, go ahead, Gadd.
Thank you for that. And when we took the walk-around, everything we documented, I spoke with Kevin Jackson, and we're actually meeting on that pretty soon, to see not only just the rails, but also the sidewalks as well, to see if we can get a plan moving forward.
Yes, that was the next thing I was going to get on the sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am.
And the grass is about this high right now. So, that grass along Walnut Street needs to also be cut. And I'd like to know, what is the status of money for the senior citizens' center?
Generally, I wouldn't respond, as you know, during this time, but we do not have any updates on funding for the senior center. As you know, we've been waiting and have invited directors or interim directors, I'm not sure what the status is, of the Department of Building and Housing to share updates regarding the ARPA funding. And our invitations have gone falling on deaf ears. So, I don't know. I can't share an update there.
I'm not picking on the city, because I was at the county last week.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify that we don't have any updates to share, unfortunately.
Okay. And those are the only things. I wanted to get follow-ups and see if we can find better way to find parking spaces for people coming to city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to offer a public comment? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the Legislative Session that occurred on April 22nd, 2025. Councilmembers, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of May 6th, 2025. On Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, the Administration Committee met to discuss two resolutions. Resolution 22 of 2025, which is a resolution appointing Shay Swerber to serve on the Board of Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority. And Resolution 23 of 2025, a resolution appointing Pierre O. McCoy to serve on the Board of Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority. Ms. Swerber and Mr. McCoy were present to answer questions councilmembers had. Ms. Swerber has been a city resident for the past three years. She believes in safe, reliable service, environmental justice, and environmental stewardship. Mr. McCoy has been a city resident since 2007. He believes in environmental justice, clean water, and a clean sewer. Councilmembers asked the following questions. How were you courted for these appointments? What impact do you believe you can make on this board? Do you have any conflicts of interest? Mr. McCoy said that he was courted for the appointment by Nate Davidson, former CRW board member. Both he and Ms. Swerber believe that they can make an impact on the board through resilient and responsive, affordable service. They are both passionate about building career pathways, environmental justice, and grant funding opportunities. They have no known conflicts of interest. Mr. McCoy served as a member, currently serves, as a member of the Parking Authority Board for the past five years. And Ms. Swerber is a paid, part-time employee of the City of Harrisburg as a community outreach forester. I would recommend my colleagues to vote as they please on Resolutions 22 and 23 of 2025. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Daniels, our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, on two public hearings that were held on May 6th, 2025. Chair Daniels?
Thank you. On May 6th, 2025, the Community and Economic Development had two public hearings to alter the official zoning map for the city of Harrisburg. The meeting was presented by President Hill. Excuse me. Both bills, the first bill was Bill 3 hyphen 2025- Both bills, the first bill was Bill Three hyphen twenty twenty-five, and the second was Bill Four, twenty twenty-five. Bill Three, twenty twenty-five, changes the designation of six forty Ulrich Street from industrial to residential medium density. It is, that particular law is currently being used in residential capacity. And it is surrounded by other residential properties. And the current owner of that property is unable to secure security instruments on it because of the designation. So changing the zoning designation will continue to maintain the property in its current use, but also allow the owner to use the property to its fullest capacity. The second bill, excuse me, changes three twenty Riley Street, fifteen eleven North Third Street, and three twenty-nine Harris Street from institutional zone to commercial neighborhood zone. And that will allow the developers of the property to build a hundred and forty-four residential units. It was not inconsistent with the current space. At the time of the zoning designation, it was expected that a university would occupy and make use of that property. But that didn't come to fruition. So currently, because of its zoning code, the law is not being used to its fullest capacity. So both of those bills will allow the owners of those lots to be able to develop them or make use of them to the best of their capacity. And that concludes my report for the May sixth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. The next committee report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Ross, our Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee Chair on the Work Session of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Chair Ross?
Thank you, President Hill, and good evening, everybody. On May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee met to discuss Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with Betta Environmental Associates for the purpose of providing environmental and geological consult services for the Hall Manor Aquatic Facility Project. Director Dave Baker and Ms. Deborah Reinhardt were present to present further administration. Director Baker explained the necessity of conducting a geological survey to assess the viability of the location for the proposed aquatic facility. This survey represents phase one of the project. Kevin Burns, Department Manager and professional geologist with Betta Environmental Associates, provided technical insights into the scope and timeline of the proposed survey. He indicated that the work is expected to take approximately four to six months to complete. Mr. Burns also committed to providing regular updates to Director Baker, who will in turn report progress to the city council. Key questions raised by city council were, what is the funding source? What was the bidding process? And what is the project's timeline and reporting? For the funding source, Director Baker stated that the cost of the survey would be fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, which will be paid from the ARPA fund. Eight million dollars was previously designated to the pools for revitalization with two million for design. The bidding process included eight companies submitted bids. Three of those companies were local firms. I already spoke about the timeline, which is to be four to six months. I am recommending Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five to be voted as yes for my council members due to the fact that this is an important step in seeing if we can even have a pool at the Hall Manor site or not so we can move forward if we are not able to. I also say yes to Betta being the company who does this because they were very, Mr. Burns was very willing to give us updates on the project with no issues and communicate with us and the public about the steps in the project. And that concludes the business of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee.
Thank you, Chair Ross. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be shared by Chair Jones, our Public Safety Committee Chair, on the Work Session of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Chair Jones?
Thank you, President Hill. On May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Public Safety Committee held a work session on Resolutions twenty-five and twenty-six. Resolutions twenty-five and twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-five are resolutions confirming the appointment of Mr. Leon Houston Senior and Mr. Amici Walker Senior to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, also known as CLIAC. Present to discuss Resolutions twenty-five and twenty-six was Mr. Houston Senior and Amici Walker Senior. Questions asked by council, how do you feel serving on this committee will benefit the residents of Harrisburg? They responded, it will be equally beneficial to the residents and police being that the residents have a trusted relationship with us and are more willing to share information to be communicated with the police. My colleagues also asked, also recognize that Mr. Houston and Mr. Walker are staples in the community and would serve well on this committee. Council asked what piqued their interest in serving. They also responded that they shared that it was the call to action put out by myself in conversations around the needs and formation of the committee. And that's what attracted them to this service. And there weren't any more questions asked by my colleagues. So that will end the report of public safety. And I recommend that Resolutions twenty-five and twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-five get the support of my colleagues because I think this is another closer step for us to repair the relationships between the community and the police department. And that is it.
Thank you, Chair Jones. We will now move to ordinances for first reading. We will begin with Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Five, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designations of two six oh one North Third Street from the industrial zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to chapter seven, three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Bill Six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Six, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending chapter eight dash one oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg, known as the Electrical Code, to implement fees for certain electrical inspections performed by the city.
Thank you. Bill Six of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, we have Bill Seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Seven, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending chapter three dash one three five of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg regarding the removal and impounding of motor vehicles to codify and otherwise confirm the city process for the selection and engagement of salver and towing operations.
Thank you. Bill Seven of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. We have two ordinances for amendment, Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel's zoning designation of six forty Ulrich Street from the industrial zone to the residential medium density zone pursuant to chapter seven dash three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. And Bill Four of two thousand and twenty-five, can you please read it into the record?
Bill Four, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designations of three twenty Riley Street, fifteen eleven North Third Street, and three twenty-nine Harris Street, formerly fifteen thirty North Fourth Street, from the industrial zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to chapter seven dash three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. We will now move to ordinances for final passage.
Madam President, if I may, I just would like to remind council that for Bills Three and Four of two thousand and twenty-five, the transcripts of the public hearing, as well as all the exhibits of the public hearing, should be incorporated into the minutes and should become a part of the official public record for both bills.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder. You have that, Mr. Truesdale? Okay, thank you. Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-five, can you please read it one more time?
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of six forty Ulrich Street from the industrial zone to the residential medium density zone pursuant to chapter seven dash three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Bill Four of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record one more time?
Bill Four, two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designations of three twenty Riley Street, fifteen eleven North Third Street, and three twenty-nine Harris Street, formerly fifteen thirty North Fourth Street, from the industrial zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to chapter seven dash three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill Four of two thousand and twenty-five? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Bill Four, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution appointing Shay Swerber to serve on the Board of Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority.
Madam President, just two issues of clarification. One, I think was probably a misunderstanding by myself. Technically, Mr. Davidson, who was elected to be a state rep, was technically still on the board. His resignation is effective today. The meeting is tomorrow night. So he was basically waiting for the next person to come along. Second, the two terms are the remainders of the terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight. It is up to the council if they approve them, which person gets that. But that should be part of the motion when you make the determination.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. We did receive his letter of resignation, so everyone is aware that he has formally resigned. Okay. So before us, we have Resolution twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, which Mr. Truesdale just read. Councilmembers, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns? I do have one comment regarding Ms. Swerber's appointment. She is a paid, part-time employee of the city already. And I feel as though maybe someone else can have an opportunity. And honestly, when we were conducting our interview and some of her responses, I personally feel like she would be a better board member for the Environmental Advisory Council. Her background seemed more suited for that role than the CRW board appointment. So that's my comments. I will be voting no on this resolution. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Resolution twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of five to two.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution appointing Pierre O. McCoy to serve on the Board of Directors of Capital Region Water, a municipal authority.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five?
I have one comment, President Hill. I thought Mr. McCoy was great. He spoke well, he answered our questions. He seemed very excited to be on the Capital Region Water Board. My only thing or concern was he's already on the Parking Committee and already on a board. And I would like to see different residents sitting on different boards within our city and making sure we're giving residents chances to be able to be a part of those boards. I think that's important with community input. So I will be voting no for Mr. McCoy, not because he is not suited for the position, but because he's already on a board. And I would like to see this seat be given to another member of the community who is currently not serving on a board or is interested in serving on the Capital Region Water Board. So that is my two cents on Mr. McCoy for Resolution twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five?
I also thought that Mr. McCoy was very knowledgeable. One of the questions came up, one of the questions that did come up was that these appointments or assignments were not posted. And if I'm not mistaken, they are on the city's website. Am I correct?
That is correct. All boards and commissions are, it's a tab on the city's website. So you would be able to see who's currently serving in those roles.
Okay, thank you.
I have one comment regarding Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five, similar to Councilwoman Ross. I find Mr. McCoy's involvement with the Parking Authority Board sufficient. As far as I'm concerned, he's been serving on the board for five years. I do believe that there should be more opportunity for other residents who have extensive backgrounds in the same field, in the same area. That would be assets to the Board of Directors of the Capital Region Water and offer some diversity within the board. So I will, too, will be voting no on Resolution twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Resolution twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of four to three.
Thank you.
Madam President, there should be a motion for which of the two years each of them would serve. Which is the term?
For Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five, the term will end in two thousand and twenty-seven. I move to amend Resolution twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-five for Ms. Swerber's term to end in two thousand and twenty-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion before us. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to the term of service for Ms. Swerber? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
One second. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Uh, the term length passes by a vote of five to two.
Thank you. I move to amend Resolution Twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-five for Mr. McCoy's term to end in two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second that.
Thank you. Are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to the amendment? The motion on the table? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Ms. Rolls?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Uh, the term length passes by a vote of four to three.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment of Leon Hudson Senior to s- Houston Senior to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment of Amici Walker Senior to serve on the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roll- or Mr. Jones? Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with BADA, I, Environmental Associates, for the purpose of providing environmental and geotechnical consultant services for the whole manner aquatic facility project.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five?
Just a comment, Madam President.
Mm-hmm.
I just, uh, highly look forward to the results of the survey and land development plan to see how we can move the, uh, whole manner pool forward. It's been a long discussion, long process. Although I am a little skeptical about the aqua- aquatic facility title, because we all kind of champion the pool, but I look forward to working with the administration on getting this done for the people of the South Side and Harrisburg in totality, so I look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the third proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation.
Thank you. Resolution Twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for up to five million dollars for funds to improve safety and accessibility along Division Street.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, we have before us Resolution Twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Volmer, are you going to speak to this or some, someone else with the administration?
Uh, we're working with Wallace Montgomery.
Oh, can you move it closer to you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, uh, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you guys. I haven't been here in a while. Um, we're working with Wallace Monca- Wallace Montgomery on this. The purpose of this, this is, this would be our second Safe Streets for All Grant, if we were to be awarded. We have one already from last year. It's all about the Vision Zero and trying to prevent vehicle pedestrian collisions and injuries and casualties. Um, I'm just gonna kind of read. I'll try to make, I'll try to condense it. So we're advancing the Vision Street Multimodul Project to address safety, accessibility, equity concerns along Division Street, which is a very important east-west corridor, uh, North Second to North Seventh Street. Um, this corridor right now doesn't have good, uh, pedestrian access or protection or bicycle, and the infrastructure is, is very poor. Um, so the, the idea is to redesign that corridor so that, uh, vehicle speeds are slowed down, uh, crossings are enhanced, um, and roadway designs are updated. Uh, I don't know how much you got. You stop me whenever you guys are bored. Um, so between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three, uh, Division Street had a number of traffic incidents and multiple injury collisions. Uh, we recently had a two-vehicle crash, um, at the intersection of North Sixth and Division. Uh, it was just, and, and it was a difficult time, um, highlighting the ongoing safety issues in the area. Um, so we're looking to redesign that corridor with, with the intent to, uh, rebuild the infrastructure, put in pedestrian and vehi- and, and bicycle safety, um, infrastructure, and slow down the traffic so that we don't have the same kinds of collisions and same kinds of, uh, pedestrian incidents. Um, so there's more there, but the, the ask of the federal government, USDOT, is up to five million dollars. There's a twenty percent match that the city needs to provide, and we have, uh, liquid fuels and general fund assets to provide that match. Uh, again, we have a, I've written all over it, but this is the cost estimate from Wallace Montgomery to sort of say, here's what we need. It's very detailed, um, including, you know, so construction, utility relocation, mobilization, inflation costs, which we know we will have, uh, contingency and, um, other costs. So it's all in here. It's a pretty well-baked, uh, financial statement. So that's kind of what it is.
Thank you. I just had one app, one question regarding, uh, the deadline as to why we're voting, suspending the rules and voting on this today. What is the deadline for this application?
Sorry, it's July twenty, but we need to, this is one of those applications that we have to have the resolution as part of the application.
Okay.
So it's, so I'm sorry to do this to you guys.
That's okay. I, I just wanted to clarify so everyone was aware why we were voting on it today. Um, I don't have any other questions. I'll open up for my colleagues who may have some additional questions for you. I'll begin with our Public Works Committee Chair. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do. Um, thank you, Ms. Volmer, for joining us, and the work you do with the city is always appreciated. We need as much revenue as possible. Question, um, that chart you just showed us, was that divvied out to council by chance at all?
No, I can send it to you.
That would be crucial, because it would be hard to make an educated decision without the educational tools in front of us. And as you said, it's really comprehensive what you're looking at. I would love to see it. I'm pretty sure council would love to see it. This way, if any residents had questions, we can answer it educationally and know what we're saying.
Absolutely.
Plus, I wanted to ask, how are the corridors selected when these projects come about? Cause like State Street, they're still having huge issues, just as you mentioned, traffic control, we need some speed control, uh, sidewalks, other things, just for safety. So how do we, um, I'm fully in support, because anything with the comprehensive plan, we need to push forward and keep updating. It's a living document. But how are those corridors specifically chosen?
That, um, I can't answer that question. It's a great question. Um, as you know, we consult a lot with Wallace and our engineering department does as well. Um, it kind of was the next project on their list, but should we have a call or a talk?
I just feel like we skip over, like, I know State Street was crucial, and there's so much work to be done there.
Yeah.
So many improvements that can be done there as well, as well as the timing of the lights. Um, we actually just worked on the timing of the light on eighteenth, because it was green lighting at the same time. Um, so we had to approach that very cautiously. And if we could use those liquid fuel dollars towards multiple projects, that would be ideal.
Right.
But I just wanted to see how can council work with the, um, administration and maybe tackle more than one project at a time, cause the city needs it. We need a lot of updating, a lot of upgrading. Um, but anyway, we can do that, uh, you know, together uniformly, that would be highly appreciated. Um, I think that's really all I had, but it's just imperative, in my opinion, that any kind of substantial documents you get towards any resolution or bill, if the clerk can be forwarded that, so we can take a look at that at any time. I know we've said it, kind of beaten a dead horse, but i- it's crucial, because, uh, I never want them to be contentious where coun- where the administration feels like council's just holding things back, or council feels like the administration's holding things back. And I think by communicating, you know, very forwardly and effectively, I think that could eliminate a lot of those concerns, and getting the documents needed, I think, are part of that communication, um, just moving forward. But thank you for all you're doing, and Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yeah, I would just concur with Councilman Rodriguez. Um, you know, State Street has been a longstanding issue, and, um, I know recently there's been some designings and things for Division Streets, which is also a problem. But, um, I would love to see what you have, again, being able to see this information before making this, uh, decision. Not that I'm against it, and I don't believe my colleagues are either, but I think in a timely manner, I think we can communicate more effectively if we have these things prior to, um, just making a, a knee-jerk vote. Um, but yeah, I would love to see us do multiple projects, cause, um, Allison Hill has definitely been ignored, so, uh, I just concur with my colleague. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Just a little clarification. I know we didn't, um, get, uh, the paper you have in your hand, Ms. Volmer, to see, um, what it looks like, but, uh, we had to vote on this tonight, correct? So...
Well, I'm gonna say, our office was advised that this had a May thirtieth deadline. I mean, Ms. Volmer just said it had a July twentieth deadline. So if it's not a May thirtieth deadline, that's why the request was for tonight. So I think everyone could have more time if that's the deadline. We were, our office got the information, it was May thirty.
Okay.
But that would still be a problem if it was May thirty and we still have to make a decision.
No, that's it. That's why it was suspended rules tonight. And, and so, so but if it's, if it's July twentieth, there's time to counsel
Everybody's here.
and the administration to consider it, so.
And Ms. Volmer would still have time to submit with the resolution and all that, okay.
Madam President, would it be appropriate to request to table it until we get the documents for, to meet the July deadline?
Well, let me just see if anybody else has any immediate questions, but yeah, we can keep the, uh, resolution in committee until all documents are received.
Thank you. I just needed that clarification. I wasn't sure, but thank you.
Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. Uh, I don't have any questions, not at the moment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions for me at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution Twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, Ms. Volmer has agreed to share the additional information, and we've clarified that the application deadline is July twentieth. Um, so I will move Resolution Twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-five to the Administration Committee, um, and we will take action once documentation has been received. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Thirty of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to facilitate the purchase and installation of certain waterway enhancements to better serve the health and safety needs of boaters.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final law consolidation and land development plan for sixteen oh five to sixteen thirteen Market Street to consolidate the subject properties and construct a new nine-unit multifamily dwelling on-site along with associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for five 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 South Twenty-Fifth Street submitted by the Commonwealth Charter Academy to demolish a portion of the existing school building on-site and redevelop the property as a cyber charter school with a larger building footprint and expanded site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final subdivision plan for two six oh one North Third Street to subdivide the existing property into four separate parcels to effectuate redevelopment of the entire site into a mixed-use development along with associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-five.
Resolution Thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution appointing Yvonne Marie Jackson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution appointing Laura Robinson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-six, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the city of Harrisburg, which have exhausted their useful life for city operations.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution Thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a co-sponsorship agreement with TLC Work-Based Training Program Incorporated for the implementation of a workforce development program in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Resolution Thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution Thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it? Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 38, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a renewed easement agreement with Harrisburg Cooling LLC for the purpose of operating and maintaining a chilled water cooler system under and through certain public right-of-ways within the city.
Thank you. Resolution 38 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, we have Resolution 39 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 39, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for the purpose of providing engineering and design services for multi- multimodal improvements along Walnut Street.
Thank you. Resolution 39 of 2025 will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, we have Resolution 40 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 40, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Trans Associates Engineering Consultants Incorporated for the purpose of providing transportation engineering services for traffic signal retiming in the downtown area in the, in furtherance of the city's Vision Zero Action Plan.
Thank you. Resolution 40 of 2025 will also move to the Public Works Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 41 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 41, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Segal Incorporated to provide actuarial review of the city's healthcare program.
Thank you. Resolution 41 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Councilwoman Ross, are you satisfied with your old business response?
Yes, I am, and who I need to contact, so thank you. We got taken care of that earlier.
Check the box.
Good, we can check the box.
Is there any other old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is 7:14 PM.